Well, welcome you everyone to the Middleton City Hall. And it's six o'clock. And I'm going to call the meeting of the Middleton Common Council for November 13, 2019 to order. So the first item is your call.
Ramsey?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Coon?
Here.
Brar?
Yeah.
West?
Present.
Bolson?
Here.
Burke?
Present.
And Luke Fissard is absent this evening.
So did he say he won't be here?
Yes, he said he would not be able to be here.
Okay. Okay, so the first item is the overview of the 2020 recommended budget, and that's Bill.
Okay, I have a brief presentation I wanted to go through to highlight what's included in the budget as recommended by the Finance Committee, highlight a couple of issues, and then lay out where we are in the process. So included in the budget materials and the public hearing notice is a list of all of the different city funds, the revenues and expenditures, and the proposed property tax levy. The two city funds that have a property tax levy are the General Fund at 13.1 million and the Debt Service Fund at 4.885 million for a total of just under $18 million for the proposed property tax levy. Looking at the General Fund, the breakdown of our revenues and expenditures, as in prior years, our largest source of revenue in the General Fund is taxes, including property taxes, at 58.6 percent. Other major revenue sources are intergovernmental aid, which includes shared revenue expenditure restraint, transportation aids from the state, and things like other charges for services, ambulance fees, building permit fees, and all those various sources that we have. If we look at the expenditure side, our largest category of expenditures is for public safety, which includes police, EMS, our contribution to the fire district, building inspection. After that, general government, including a lot of our city hall service departments, administration, finance, IT, Public Works, and then Public Lands, and things like library contribution, in-your-center recreation are included in the other categories. On the personnel side, in the recommended budget, we have increases for the police and EMS union per their contracts. We have settled collective bargaining agreements for both unions. The recommended budget includes a 2% cost of living adjustment for non-union employees, and that's consistent with the union increases per the contracts. Health insurance rates are increasing by 5.9% for next year. Dental insurance costs are flat. And we have a few personnel decision items, no new positions, but there is about $3,000 or a couple additional hours per week for the youth center director, about $8,400 for the IT intern, and then we have a personnel contingency of just under $140,000. And looking at what's included in that personnel contingency, it has full year funding for all of the three categories of potential adjustments. And in an earlier version of the budget, we were looking at potentially funding some things mid-year, which had the challenge of then the following year you have that full cost, so you're setting yourself up for a hole going into the future budget. With the additional revenues, all of these are fully funded in the recommended budget, and that includes an allocation of $50,000 for merit pay adjustments, as reviewed by the Personnel and Finance Committee. We have a placeholder for potential compensation plan market adjustments, for any adjustments that would be recommended following the review of the city's compensation plan and looking at market comparables. And then the final item was the decision item from the Police Department to reclassify four police sergeants to lieutenants at a cost of about $36,000. That comes up to the total of just under $140,000. Looking at the operating budget, one area where there's a savings for the General Fund in 2020 is for the public fire protection direct billing. That was implemented in July of 2019 to take those costs out of the General Fund supported by the property tax levy and put them to a direct billing charge for water utility customers. Because that was implemented mid-year, we had part of the savings in the General Fund in 2019, will have the full year savings in 2020. We have other operating decision items, various items, for a total of 276,000. Some of the larger items that are included are listed below: tree planting and hazardous tree removal, increased costs for the fire district, election costs related to the presidential election year, licensing for Microsoft and Cisco for IT for the various different departments that they support, the increase in the ambulance capital reserve, which is taking that from 60,000 to 80,000 based on what we've been seeing for ambulance replacement costs, additional refuse and recycling costs for our contract and as we add additional homes. And then there's various other items that were included in the materials reviewed by the Finance Committee, and can go through that if questions, look at the other items.
Hey, Bill?
Yeah?
Very quickly, the election cost increase, we would probably not experience that in 2021, is that correct?
That's right, yeah. This would be an increase in costs that we have in even-numbered years, yeah. So we would see in 2022, maybe not to the same extent, but we would see normally an increase when we have four elections with the fall election cycle in the even-numbered year, so in '20 and '22, but in 2021, we would see this being reduced.
So it's not strictly presidential, it's just the fact that a two-year cycle, we wouldn't expect...
It's a reflection of planning on four elections versus two, and with the higher turnout of a presidential year, they usually have some additional staffing.
Right.
A few other notes for the recommended operating budget. It utilizes the full capacity for the levy limit program and utilizes several adjustments that I'll detail in a little bit here. It would continue to qualify for the expenditure restraint program, which would qualify us for an additional aid program, aid payment in 2021. There's always a one-year lag between the year you qualify, and then that gets you set up for an aid payment the following year. It fully funds the city's fire and ambulance capital reserves, which is something that's been discussed for several years about wanting to get to that goal, and this budget reaches that so that we have that built into the budget and we're not relying on surplus to fund those items. It would fully fund all positions and the potential compensation adjustments for the full year. It includes a general contingency amount of $150,000, and that's 2/3 of 1% of the total General Fund budget, and that's the target that's identified in the city's fund balance policy. And the property tax levy increase overall for both the General Fund and Debt Service would be about a 2.8% increase. This slide has some notes on the expenditure restraint program, not going to go through the full calculation unless there are questions, but the bottom line is that we are just under that limit by about $10,000 based on the recommended budget. On the capital side, the recommended general capital borrowing is 3.5 million. That's broken out by department area on this slide, and included in the materials in the packet was the decision matrix listing all of the individual items. I did, in the original version that went out, had an earlier version, and thank you, Sean, for pointing that out, but everyone should have the corrected final version as recommended by the Finance Committee for the 3.5 million. As part of our capital planning, as you know, we look not just at the single year, but we project out five years. In the future years, those are really just placeholder numbers, but we're projecting, maintaining that target of 3.5 million per year, and based on the commitments from the council to fund approximately $2 million per year for streets and the vehicle replacement plan at $500,000 a year, that leaves about $1 million for all of the other items, admin, IT, library, police, EMS, and other public lands and public works items. The numbers here for future years are just kind of reflective of what the requests are from the departments. We know there's a couple larger years for police and EMS as they're doing radio replacements. As those are done, based on the requests from the departments, we should be able to reduce the capital for those departments, potentially freeing up to address some of the other priorities for Public Works and Public Lands. Moving over to the Debt Service budget, we have a balanced Debt Service budget with sources and uses of funds of just over 5.2 million. The largest share is the Debt Service levy of the $4,885. We also still have some Build America bond subsidies coming in, applying impact fees for police, fire, and EMS. And then with the debt we issued this year, it included a premium, so we actually received cash upfront. We can use that to apply to our payments that are being made next year. I should note that the Debt Service budget does not include TIF district debt because we have that budgeted in the funds for each TIF district, so this is just the general obligation debt. And looking at our projections, we've seen a bit of a decrease in the mill rate for Debt Service over the last couple of years. That's primarily due to equalized value growth that's been higher than expected the last couple of years. We are projecting that that would increase about 3% each year based on the financing plan, reaching a peak at around 2026, and that peak would be just over $1.75 per thousand. Moving on to the property tax projections, this slide was in the earlier materials that we provided, but I think it's good just to look at the context, to remember that for City of Middleton compared to other cities and villages in Dane County, we are in the lower half of municipal tax rates. The highest in the county are Madison at just under $9 per thousand, Fitchburg, Stoughton, Stone Prairie in the seven and a half to a little over $8 per thousand, Middleton's at just under six at 5.94 per thousand for last tax year, which is the last year we have comparison information. This slide provides some additional comparisons, and I won't go through all the numbers here, but this looks at not just the tax rate, but also if you look at various fees, refuse, recycling, what is the total tax bill for municipal government for the different comparable cities in Dane County. If we look at the levy limit formula for next year, and this is a slide provides a summary, there is a copy of the full draft form included in your packet, we are looking at an increase for net new construction of 1.724%. The levy limit formula includes no inflation factor, so if we look at just our base levy, that 1.7% is the allowable increase before any adjustments, and that's about $220,000 for next year. Debt Services excluded, so that's why you see the Debt Service for 2019 coming off. There's also adjustments made for personal property aid where that's factored out of the formula. There are several adjustments that we are discussing, including with the levy limit worksheet for next year. The largest of those is the Debt Service, that's $5,035,000. Some of the other optional adjustments, there's one for unreimbursed emergency expenses from a declared disaster, looking at about $60,000 there. That is not a base building adjustment, so if we do take that adjustment, that would allow us to increase the levy for this tax year, but then that would come off in future years. And in our budget planning discussed with the Finance Committee, we have that earmarked and tied to one-time items, a lot of the tree-related work that was needed in follow-up to the flooding, so that when that amount comes off the levy in the future, we aren't looking at cutting ongoing operating costs. Should note that this number that we have is based on items funded by the General Fund, so we have not included unreimbursed local share for things that would be funded by stormwater utility or from state trust fund loan borrowing, just general fund costs. And we also have received clarification from the Department of Revenue that you can only claim this adjustment in the year of the disaster or the year following. So this is our one and only time to take this adjustment, we would not be able to do this in future years from the 2018 flooding. Another adjustment is charges related to a joint fire district. That allows you to increase by inflation plus 2%, so it would allow us to go higher than our net new construction amount for just the fire district charges. For the city next year, that net cost is about $26,000. The requirement here is that each member of the fire district needs to pass a resolution authorizing this in order for any member to take it. Not every member needs to use the adjustment, but everyone must pass a resolution authorizing it. My understanding is Town of Westport has acted on this last night. I've reached out to the treasurers in the Town of Middleton and Springfield, and Chief Harris had had conversations with the town reps on the Fire District Board. I believe all of the other communities are planning to take action on this, but that's something we'll need to watch and confirm, that the resolution passes in each community in order for us to be able to take this adjustment. There is a provision that allows you to carry forward prior year unused levy capacity. We have a relatively small amount of $2,400 that's available from some unused capacity back in 2014 that could be applied this year, and that would require 2/3 vote of the council to authorize using that adjustment. And then the final one is there is a provision, it's called a workforce housing adjustment, although when you look at the details of it, it's questionable how much it really addresses workforce housing, but it allows you to make an adjustment for qualifying single-family homes on lots that are smaller than a quarter acre that sell for no more than 80% of the median sale price. And in looking at with our building inspector and assessor, there is one property that qualifies this year.
Wow.
Want to, we can take advantage of that adjustment for $1,000.
Take it.
So before, can you go back to that?
Sure, yep.
Go ahead.
Are all of those items, the joint fire district, I don't remember that, did we pass that?
We haven't passed the resolution. We did talk about this in part of the package at the Finance Committee. If we want to go forward with this, wouldn't there be action on the budget at next Tuesday's meeting, we would have to have a separate resolution authorizing this adjustment. So you'd probably put that first, and if that passes, and if it's passed from the other jurisdictions, then we could include this in the levy.
So we won't know whether we can actually take that until all the, all four or five of the districts approve it?
Right, and Westport has acted. I heard from Town of Middleton that I believe they're planning on discussing it on November 18th, so we'll know that. I don't know about Springfield yet, but we'll try to find out when they're going to take this up before our meeting next Tuesday.
So on the off chance that we say that we want to take this, how, what's the drop-dead line for whether we can include this or not? Is it at the time we pass, or is it at December 1st?
Before we finalize...
I mean, if we put this under our budget, we don't know that we have authorization to take it.
Right.
Same thing with the, well, okay, the other one's a different story, but we won't know whether we can take this or not. And so at this point, this number's not included in our...
This is included in the recommended budget.
It is?
It is. This is already included in the numbers that we've discussed at Finance Committee.
So we could have another $26,000 hole, is what you're telling us?
Yes, if the other jurisdictions don't act. And from what I've heard from Chief Harris in his conversations, no one has objected to doing this, but we're trying to get confirmation from all the municipalities making up the district that they are going to do this. If Town of Middleton does act on the 18th, we'll know that, and we'll know Westport, and the question is just Springfield on what night they're going to do it. If they don't have a chance to act on it by November 19th, you know, we may have to wait to finalize the levy until we know if we can take this adjustment.
Oh, do we need to push them on?
Town to the wire.
I reached out to them today. I will try to get confirmation by the end of this week so that we know that as we're putting together the agenda for next Tuesday.
But Chief Harris reached out to each of them, and they were, through his verbal contact, he thought they would all be supportive.
So the only thing is Springfield, the others seem to be on board?
And Springfield maybe too, I just don't have confirmation on what day it's going to hit their agenda yet.
Okay.
But we'll try to find that out.
Is it just a timing thing that a municipality would not take advantage of it, or is that, why would you not?
I think there's no disadvantage for them passing the resolution, even if their budget situation is such that they don't need the adjustment, they don't have to take it, they just need to pass a resolution saying they're supportive of other members of the fire district taking this. And since the city is the largest share of the district, I think it's in everyone's interest to let the city pay more for the cost of the fire district.
Sure.
We're just trying to work out the logistics and the timing, and I think part of that was intentional with the legislature of making it a little challenging to use this adjustment. But like I said, we've had no indication that anyone is opposed to it, and we're just trying to make sure that the dates line up so we know when everyone acts on it.
So it helps them as well, right, not just only us?
It would give them the opportunity to use the adjustment if they need it, they don't have to if they don't want to.
Yes, Susan.
Yeah, I think that was, each, though each one of those districts, I want to clarify this, would have to ask the other districts for the same thing, is that correct?
Each, if any member wants to use it, they need every member to pass a resolution authorizing it.
So does it need to be done for each member if they want to use it? So for example, there's four members, do all four members need to pass, ask the other four members for each to pass a resolution for, specifically for each member?
No, there can be one resolution passed that allows any number of members to use it, which can be one or all four or any other combination. And I believe Town of Westport is planning to use the adjustment, and they've acted on their resolution. We just need to make sure that Town of Middleton and Springfield, even if they aren't planning to use it, that they will be supportive of passing the resolution, and we'll work on confirming that. The other items are within the city's control if we want to use those adjustments right Moving on to the tax rate projections, if we look at the increases in the levy, for the General Fund, it's at 13.1 million, that's a 2.3% increase. The Debt Service levy at 4.8 is a 4.3% increase in the levy. Adding those together, that gets us to the 2.8% overall increase in the amount we're collecting. When we look at the equalized tax rate, which is based on, every year, Department of Revenue takes a look at our values and sees how much based on market value growth, what our value is, and they equalize that with all municipalities in the state, that rate would actually be going down slightly by 1.7% to $5.65 per thousand. However, this is not a revaluation year for us, so most properties, unless they had additions or remodeling, did not have an assessment increase, and we also, most of our new construction growth occurred in our TIF districts. So as a result, our actual assessed value tax rate based on this levy would be going to $6.10 per thousand, which is a 4.7% increase. When I looked at that, you know, I was really trying to understand, you know, why is it that we have a 2.8% increase in the levy, but our rate would be going up by 4.7%? And I think it's a combination of a couple of things. One is that, like I said, most of our assessed value growth was not in TIF districts. The other thing is we did have some large commercial properties outside of the TIF districts that actually had assessments go down this year. And the ones that I know of, there were some properties owned by artists, including the Office Tower at 1600 Aspen Wood Commons and the Marriott, that had contacted the assessor during open book and provided additional updated income and expense information, and for the hotel, what their actual receipts were, and they're showing that their revenues were going down. And based on that, they were able to get adjustments to their assessments. So we don't have much growth outside of the TIF districts, we actually had some properties in the TID that went down, and most assessments stayed flat. So when you take the amount you're collecting and you divide it by the non-TIF tax base, that's what's causing that rate to go up higher than anticipated. We're also going to see the same thing affecting the school district, that even though their equalized rate from the referendum is going up less than they projected, the actual assessed value rate on the tax bill is still going to be a larger increase next year. Any questions on that? I know it's, it gets kind of complicated when we look at the numbers, but it's, you know, we generally budget based on the levy because that's what is under our control, but when we have assessment changes or revaluation or non-revaluation years, it can have that kind of impact.
That's very hard to explain to the taxpayers, all those various things, isn't it so?
Continuing on with the property tax projections, we had asked the assessor each year what the average single-family assessment is, and again, because it wasn't a revaluation year, there was not much of a change, so it's about $400,000 per year. The assessed mill rate would be going up slightly, about 4.7%, that would result on an average single-family home, the projected city tax amount being about $110 increase for the city portion of the tax bill. If we kind of move on to next steps from here, there are several potential budget adjustments to consider. A couple of these are based on updates for actions that have taken place since the Finance Committee was reviewing the budget. The first is the sewer rate increase that was recommended by Finance Committee and approved by council at the last meeting, and based on that rate increase, we could increase the budgeted revenue for the sewer utility by about $200,000 to the 3.286 million. The council had also acted to delay the TIF III project for reconstruction of Parmenter and work on Elmwood and Aurora Streets, so that amount could be removed from the TIF budget for 2020, that's 1.8 million in the TIF, and there was also an amount in the water utility for their portion of the capital of 288,000. In the...
Bill, could you...
Sure.
Those two items were already approved by council. Am I hearing that they're not, they haven't been removed or adjusted for the budget?
Yes, essentially what we have for the budget is what was recommended by the Finance Committee and published for the public hearing, so I was thinking there could be action to formally remove those from the budget based on the prior council.
Even though council has already said to do these things?
Yeah, I guess it wasn't clear if that was included to make the budget adjustments, but for the...
You want to take these one at a time, or do you want to wait till you're done?
I think I could wait till we're done and on to the budget deliberations. With the airport budget, the request for the airport revenues that came from the commission had some larger increases for hangar revenue based on a flat dollar amount by size of hangar, and an increase for the lease for the MADC for the terminal land area. And I believe in discussion with the city attorney, looking at the terms of the agreement, were limited to what the actual increase in the Consumer Price Index was for hangars for a five-year period and for MADC for a one-year period. So based on that advice from the city attorney, we could reduce the airport projected revenues by these amounts to bring it in line with the maximum we can charge under the lease agreements. There was also discussion at that time about having the hangar owners pay directly for stormwater utility fees related to the impervious area of their hangar. I think we have the authority, and correct me if I'm wrong, to do that under the current lease agreements, but the budget has all of that cost shown by the airport, so we could potentially adjust the expenditures down slightly based on that cost.
We are limited by our airport land lease with each of the hangar owners to adjust rates every five years or when there is a major increase to the city and costs of the airport. So now it's timely because 2020, 2020 is our next, beginning of our next five-year term for those hangar land leases, so we need to include the stormwater utility within that at this point.
Is that just a, an operating cost that you push through their lease, or is it a separate billing?
Separate billing because it goes on the water bill.
You could accomplish it both ways, right? Do the leases, right, so normally a lease could include a pass-through for operating expenses that don't belong to the landlord, right? Is that the, is that the approach you're going to take, or you're going to have a separate billing from the water utility? Either way, you get the money, just a question of how it gets billed. Is there, is there a, and the land leases to pass through these kind of operating expenses?
Yes. Yeah, there is a provision in the land lease that would allow us to pass through the expenses. I know Public Works was looking into the best way to implement that and what that amount would be by hangar, so I don't know if they had made a decision on it if we would... on it, if we would bill them as part of a water bill if they're receiving water service, or if that would just be part of their annual lease payment.
Well, so I mean, the problem comes if you have a hangar out there that doesn't have water service.
Right.
How are you going to bill them? And the only way it seems feasible is through the operating lease.
Yeah.
So probably going to be the case because very few of them have water bills.
Can't you send them a bill that just doesn't have has zero dollars for water and then has a stormwater fee?
Potentially. I know Public Works was going to look into the logistics. I don't know what what plan they have for how to implement that.
And we have time that the bills don't go out till January, and then they're due March 1st.
Well, I got two questions about the airport things. You said this decreased hangar revenue, they are not decreased compared to the last year. This is decreased compared to what that could have been.
Right, yeah. They're decreased compared to the budget as presented by the Airport Commission.
Mm-hmm.
They would actually be increases based on what we collected in 2019.
Okay, and the same is true for MADC, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And then the last area that we had identified for discussion is Madison Metro Transit Service. And I guess there have been a couple of discussions that have taken place among the Council about and at the Finance Committee. There was a discussion and included in the Finance Committee recommendation to add $5,000 to add additional bus on Route 72 during peak periods to deal with overcrowding on that route. There was also a discussion of looking at various options to try to expand bus service. And then we had the surprise that came last Friday when we received a letter from Madison Metro informing us that based on the budget proposed by the Mayor of Madison, that our costs for just our base level of transit service was increasing by almost $70,000 in 2020 over the amount that they had given us back in August when we started our budget process. And we've had conversations with the other municipalities that partner with Madison Metro, Fitchburg, Sun Prairie, and Verona. All of them received a similar letter, and none of them had any advance notice that this was even being discussed.
Yes, Emily.
Is there, I understand that that none of you knew, and this is short notice, but I'm starting to wonder, is this going to happen again next year from Madison Metro? Is this a one-time change?
Sure hope not. It hasn't happened in the 21 years I've been here.
Okay.
This is the first time that we've gotten that kind of a surprise this late.
Thank you.
So obviously, this amount is not included in the recommended budget. I think every municipality that's affected is kind of scrambling to figure out how to respond to this. City of Fitchburg had a meeting last night where they adopted their budget. So they got notice on Friday and had a meeting on Tuesday. What we heard from them is that they adopted their budget without including this and are planning on letting Metro know that this and Madison know that this came too late in the process to incorporate in their budget. They can't accommodate it and put it back on Metro to see if Metro's going to reduce their service. For Sun Prairie, they have a much smaller amount. Their increase was 17,000 because they just have an express bus route. Conversations I've had with them, they were frustrated by the lack of notice and explanation, but they said they likely would be able to accommodate that in their budget. And then for the City of Verona, their bus service is also more limited, and Epic pays for the local share for their bus service. And their administrator is having a meeting with the representatives from Epic next Tuesday to talk about how to respond to it. As we started discussing with the mayor and among staff what our options could be at this point, we've laid out a couple here. None of them are really good options at this point in the process. One would be to try to reduce our bus service to accommodate this increase within our existing operation. That would be a significant portion of our transit budget and would likely involve a major service reduction and could include the elimination of Saturday bus service. Second option would be to try to identify another funding source, and one of the few options we have out there would be looking at a wheel tax to try to cover this cost. Or go back to the recommended budget and try to find a place to cut items within the budget. Unfortunately, this is a year where we already have tight net new construction. We don't have major new positions. About the only place we could look at would be either general or personnel contingency, and that potentially pushes costs into future years. Or I guess the fourth option would be to do what Fitchburg did and say no, or try to work with Madison to say, is there a way that this could be delayed and not adopt it for 2020 and try to work on funding this in 2021?
What did you say they were going to charge Fitchburg extra?
We're saying about 70,000.
Seventy-eight thousand.
So I know we have a separate item on the agenda for discussion about this because it is such a major change in the budget. As far as the presentation, there wasn't much additional I had. Just wanted to clarify that at this point, we have the public hearing tonight on the agenda. Then there's the opportunity for discussion, deliberation, any potential budget amendments from the Council. If there are any budget adjustments, we recommend having a discussion tonight so that when we go into the meeting next Tuesday, we have the final numbers and can have the resolutions to approve the levy and approve the budget next, subject to clarifying the list levy limit adjustments.
Okay, so I'm going to open the public hearing part of the budget here now. So anybody who wants to speak? Yes, Nick, go ahead.
Hello, Mayor, Council. My name is Nick Masternardi, and I started a software company about four and a half years ago. We actually provide software to cities. So it's been a heck of a ride. I think about last year this time, we were about seven or eight employees, and now we service roughly over 200 cities across 48 states. And the company is about 29 employees right now. And so we're headquartered here in downtown Middleton. And but we also have a growing staff of software engineers who also who live downtown. And so we're kind of feeling this tension now where we have to expand and kind of pick a headquarters. I live here in Middleton. I, you know, I'm kind of obviously partial to this, but at the same time, it's it feels a little selfish for me to force everybody out here, a lot of them who don't have cars and everything. So to come this way, I would love to make Middleton our headquarters. We continue to expand. We have a bunch of new hirings opening open now. And so just as as an employer here in town, trying to figure out what we what we can do, I don't want to move our headquarters downtown, but at the same time, we bring investors, just a bunch of city officials, and a lot of meetings here. And so one of the things that's important, I hate to hear about what Madison has dropped on the budget for transportation for us, just because I feel that this is at a point where we're growing, and I know there must be other companies in similar situations who are trying to attract employees. So I'm trying to get a bunch of employees out to our office here so we can expand at least three, four days a week. And I think there's a couple of options that would just at least anecdotally from our perspective be really helpful. One is, I would like to bring our employees out, and if that's shifting peak slightly or adding another one just to make the peak a little wider on both sides, I think that would really help us with bringing employees out here. I also, for tons of reasons, have to pop downtown, and those are on non-peak hours. And it's, you know, just even for routine meeting can easily be, and everybody here probably does the same thing, too. So that's a probably a heftier option is if we had non-peak service that at least, you know, I would I would like to take public transit to do that. One other thing of note is, we relocated the company after we first started up here. We started the company in the Austin area. And just because transportation had been becoming, traffic was a nightmare down there. We were relocated up here for ease of life. And now I'm seeing kind of what's happening here. And if we don't kind of tackle this problem with smart public transportation, and this is really the stage to do it, we'll face what happened to Austin, and people leave there. And so, you know, I know that there's some probably best intent to do this, maybe from the City of Madison. But one of the other factors I'll point out is, you may say there's a bunch of other routes, like the 15 route, but those routes are for Middleton, go through the West Transfer Point, can easily run 40, 45 minutes, not counting like getting to where you're going. So you're overall trips over an hour to do that. Those really aren't practical for commutes either way. Anytime you go from here through the West Transfer Point, whether over near West Town Mall, that's just not efficient. So for this, you know, level of budget, I just, again, anecdotally from our perspective, it would really be helpful to have at least a slightly expanded peak service offering, a good neighbor flyer, Express, or something that just all that would really be helpful for us is downtown Middleton to downtown Capital Square during peak slightly expanded. And so I guess that's just one perspective to share from a company, and I'm sure that there must be others in similar situations. Yes?
And one question. What are those bus lines that go from downtown Middleton to downtown Madison? Numbers?
72, 73. You can kind of count 15 because it runs out over off of Demming, gets pretty close, but I wouldn't, it's not.
15, I thought you said, went to the West Transfer Point.
Yeah, well, it comes, it goes down Old Sock Road. So it does, and then comes up off of Demming. And so actually, on 15, I'm not sure if it hits the West Transfer Point or not.
No, it does not. And also, number 70 also doesn't go to the West Transfer Point. It takes a little bit, 10 minutes longer, but 70 runs, you know, up to 11 o'clock, so.
Yeah, the the ones, I think the ones that do hit the West Transfer Point are part of the, is that BRT?
I don't think they have BRT.
BRT doesn't start until 2024.
Okay. So anyway, I just I just point that out for, you know, some of the solutions that would go through the West Transfer Point. The timing on that is so long.
71 is the one that goes directly from the Capital Square to.
Seven, yes, okay. So 71 is the is the best shot at the direct.
Okay, that's what I was curious.
Yeah.
Then the other is 70, which goes through, it does add up to 10 minutes or so, but that is all day long going up to about 10 o'clock, so.
Okay. The one last thing I would say is, while we are one company that is for, Middleton's been great for us, I feel like there must be others. I feel for any company, a healthy mix of workforce is probably comprised of, you've got some young folks who probably live in Madison, and you've got some, I've got two young kids who like living in Middleton. And I think any company has a healthy mix of those types of play, those types of employees. And so just the ability to bring them both together, I think, will unlock a lot of continued growth and quality of life for Middleton employees and especially employers. So I just wanted to share that. Again, I think it's really difficult under the current budget situation, but even anything small we can do to improve the frequency and the quality, the efficiency of the transit, at least for us, would be highly, highly valuable. So.
Yeah, one thing which we could possibly ask is the new bus, which will be added at peak hours, if it's 15 minutes or half hour delayed. So but that's what we have to work with the Madison Metro.
I think so the our best, like our best shot for this to be a viable solution is the 71 bus. And that 71 bus, if you take a look, I think the last one currently out of Middleton to back downtown to Madison is like at 5:00.
Okay.
And so, you know, we get some, I don't want to send my employees home at 5:00 because it's their last bus. But, you know, if even if the peak were slightly shifted or one or two, I think would be the Band-Aid. Long run, I would love to have, you know, take, if we go downtown for a basketball game, nights, weekends, I think we can think about that even in time. But there is a short run crunch for us to pick our headquarters, pick our expansion, and pick our our transit strategy for our employees.
So if it was 5:30 or 6:00?
That would definitely be helpful.
Okay. Any other questions? One, Nick?
Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Any other folks who want to speak to the budget hearing? Okay, well, if there are no more speakers, I'm going to close that part of the meeting, and we move on to the item number one and under the budget, the budget deliberation and potential budget amendments.
So Bill, how do you want to break this apart? Want us to capital and operating, or do you want to do portions of capital, portions of operating, or what?
You know, I think potentially, there could be starting with if there are any amendments. Yeah, there's the the three items that we had listed in the presentation for the sewer revenues and the capital and airport. Then maybe from there, if there's discussion of other amendments, I think there could be either one encompassing motion to recommend all of the funds as amended, or if there's a desire to do it by fund, we could.
Well, here's what I would recommend. So I'll make a motion that we include the sewer rate increase and the delay of the construction in TID III as as previously approved by Council, that we formalize those into the budget.
Okay, need a second?
Checking that.
Any discussion on that? Yes?
Well, is the decrease in the TID number three budget also accounting for the decrease in the water utility capital budget that's tied to that?
So there would be both, right? So the the water utility would drop because it's not.
Or the motion, are those two bundled together?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? So the motion is for the sewer rate increase and laying the Parment, Elmwood, and Aurora construction.
Well, again, this just formalizes what Council did last meeting.
Yes, yes. Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion passes unanimously. So I don't think there is a whole lot to do about the airport budget, right?
Correct.
I mean, it's.
I would need a motion to.
Do we need a motion to formalize charging the hangar users for stormwater utility fees?
Yes.
Yeah, I think we still have some details to work out about how that's done in practice, but I think that could be part of a motion to, as part of the budget, direct that this be directly charged to the hangar owners, and we can determine the most efficient way to do that.
So just, this is not an increase or decrease to the budget because the airport is already getting charged for stormwater.
Yes, the city's paying for it.
It's just who it goes to, right? So there's no revenue or expense impact to that item.
Right. That is true, but we need to get it formalized so that city, the city is not paying for it and the hangar users are.
So Bill, are we charging the city for this now?
Yeah, it, there is an expense in the airport for the stormwater utility fees. So you would see a decrease in the cost paid by the airport, and you'd have direct charges to the hangar owners.
So the airport does pay that now?
Correct. Right now, they're issuing a bill for all the stormwater utility fees for the airport.
Okay.
So you you would have the same revenue coming into the stormwater utility, but the portion that's being paid by the city for the airport would go down by the amount that's being directly charged.
Okay, okay. So it doesn't.
I don't have that specific dollar amount broken out yet, but I think at this point, we could keep the expenditure number in the airport, but if there's a direction to move down this road, we will base the actual charges on the reduced amount.
Well, and that's why I was getting to the lease, the operating lease pass-through, right?
Right.
I don't think you want to directly bill the hangar owners. I think you want to continue to to bill the airport and have the airport collect the utility fees from the hangar owners through the lease operating, through a lease pass-through, right? That's the cleanest mechanism to do it. And that that way, it encompasses the non-water and sewer users at the airport, right? If this is a directly pass-through on their leases, then it makes it clean. You have one bill to the airport, the airport collects that because they're collecting the rent or the lease payments, and then they they can split it out that way.
Yes, Susan.
On that, I guess my concern is the hangar owners are going to be paying based on square footage, that's impervious square footage, which I mean, fairly certain differs between each hangar. So do we have a standard lease, or do we have leases for each individual hangar that would incorporate that?
Well, we'll go the same method, ERU, so I think the minimum is one, right?
Yeah, well, that's not what I'm asking. I'm asking for the hangars, do we have a standard lease that would not spell out? I'm asking for the hangars, do we have a standard lease that would not spell out the amount of ERUs for each individual hangar?
There are different size hangars, so in looking at this, Public Works was trying to look at how do they determine the ERU for the different size hangars, and what is the amount that would be collected from each hangar?
Right.
And I think that is going to vary based on the size.
Yes, it will. So I'm just, what my concern is, is that we have one standard hangar lease, I don't know if the cost for renting varies that much with the size of the hangar. It's, this is getting into billing details, but I think it's still important.
We have about forty-three hangars currently.
Mm-hmm.
Thirty-six of them are a, a standard lot size, and then seven of them are larger, and I think they vary from lot to lot.
And each one of those then would be different?
Yeah.
That's why I'm, I'm sort of thinking, keep sending it like a water bill, it's just the sewer charge without a water charge if they don't get water, might be the easiest.
Yeah, I, I think that you, if the intent is to, to charge this, and it sounds like that's where the discussion's going, I think we can work with the billing manager and Public Works staff to figure out the most efficient way to calculate and bill that out. I, I don't know all those answers today, but I think that they're the right people to talk to to figure out the best way to implement it. If, but I think we understand what the intent is.
Yes, Emily?
I was going to say, I, I support Mark's thought of just having, taking it out of the lease and, and having the airport decide what the per capita is based on pervious. Like, let the, I support keeping it simple, basically. Send a bill, let them work it out.
The concern is, Susan, is that if, if, if none of these airport, if none of the leaseholders have ever received a stormwater utility bill, right, it's going to end up in the trash can, especially since they don't have water service. But if it's part of the lease.
Fair number of them do have water service.
Heard from Mike that they don't.
Well, they told me at the Airport Commission, when I brought this up at the Airport Commission, that they had water bills, some of them do.
About seven of them do.
Yeah.
I, I wouldn't get fixated on the water service or not. MRD doesn't have water service, but we do have a stormwater utility charge. We can just turn that flag off on water and sewer and keep on stormwater utility, and it works okay.
So.
I still think it'd be easier. You have a, you have a billing function that's already, it doesn't matter. The intent is to charge them, let Public Works and.
Public Works.
Figure out how best to do it.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think that's a good solution, so.
I would say.
Anything else from the, any other?
Do we need a motion to that effect? Because that's different from what you initially.
We, we need a motion to decrease the revenue, so I'll make a motion to decrease the hangar revenue and decrease the MADC revenue, and in that same motion, that we charge the hang owners a stormwater utility fee, collected however Public Works thinks is best.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Just the same, just the same thing you said, Mayor, is that this decrease is comparing it to the earlier budget, it's actually an increase compared to prior years.
Correct. Less of an increase.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
Just to help understand that, it, it's based on the published budget.
Correct.
That it would be a decrease from the published budget, but we all know it's an increase from this year's budget.
I just, I think it needs to be repeated, especially if anybody's watching this on TV in the next few days, they'll be like, oh, it's a decrease. Uh, okay. Not really.
To refinement of our estimates.
That's fast.
So why did we put in the budget? We hadn't really negotiated anything with those, uh.
Oh.
These hangar owners yet, right? It wasn't the process, it's supposed to be done next year, right?
I could speak to this since I'm on the Airport Commission.
Yes.
Um, we knew what we wanted to try to do was to increase hangar rates or the lease rates. We weren't sure, because we didn't have an attorney on, in our commission, to determine what we could do legally, so we said, this is our proposal, we sent it to the city attorney to figure out what was the right amount, and the city attorneys come back and said, what you originally asked for is not really doable, so these numbers are being tweaked, but the original, I think the original budget numbers were coming from what the Airport Commission had proposed with a lack of knowledge.
Okay, okay, so that makes sense. Okay, all right. Okay, any further question or discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. So we are done with the potential budget adjustments, so.
Going to address Madison Metro Transit Service?
Someday. Let's leave that alone, let's take care of all the rest of this. So I, I would propose that we do the capital budgets first, and then we do all the other funds for operating, and then leave the general fund to last.
No, we are not approving the budget, that's on nineteenth, we are only doing amendments.
Or is that, well.
We are only doing the amendments, so you have any amendments here?
Are you looking for a formalized approval of what's in there?
I think what would be helpful tonight is if there are any other adjustments to the recommended budget, that we discuss those and act on them tonight, so that next week on Tuesday, we have a resolution for you to adopt all the budgets and the funds.
Right.
Who's the transit?
So why don't we start with capital? Or the general fund capital, and then, then the separate fund capital, to see if there are any recommendations or adjustments that people would like to make? So I'll, I'll make a motion that we proceed as, as we have laid out in these documents for.
For capital?
For the general fund capital.
Second that.
So there's no, well, there's no amendment, so I don't think we are making any motion here.
Well, but he's still looking for a, another thumbs up to, to formalize what we've got so far.
Are we, we are not looking for a motion here, right? If there's only any amendment, that just, we can discuss it.
Yeah, I don't think there needs to be action to adopt the budget tonight. Um, I think it's up to the body if they want to have a, a motion essentially saying we don't intend to make any amendments here, but we would still have an item in the form of a resolution for adoption next Tuesday.
Okay, okay, so that's what you're doing?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's a second to it?
That was me.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes. Okay.
So then I'll make the same motion for all of the, the enterprise funds.
I'll second that.
So that would be water, sewer, golf. I think that's it, right? Pardon me?
Airport, airport.
Well, wouldn't that also include the library, or?
No, library's not an enterprise fund.
Okay.
Water, sewer, stormwater, airport, golf course.
Okay.
Middleton Utility District technically, but they have no budget because there's no activity.
Okay, okay. Okay, so is there a second?
There was a second.
I second it.
Oh, okay. Any discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously.
Um, so same motion for the TIF districts.
Second.
So with those modifications?
Correct.
Okay. So Bill, you will make the modification. Okay. Any questions? All those in favor of the motion for TIF districts say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously.
What else is left here for, is that, this is not, this is all funds, this isn't capital, right? What's left for capital?
So on here is the listing by Catagory Fund. We have several funds under special revenue, which include library, tourism, some of the special funds like EMS Special Project, Senior Center Special Project, Park Funds. You have the Risk Management Fund, the CDA, Debt Service Fund, and then the General Fund.
Yeah, but we're really specifically looking for capital first.
Oh, okay, I look at capital. I think we have acted on all the capital and the general.
Do we need fire, do we need to specifically call out fire, the?
We actually have that amount included in our general fund now, so I.
Okay, that's right. Well, except that they have their own expenditure set, right? They have their own capital spending budget, but we don't really have, we just have the one ninety?
Yeah, we, we fund the one ninety-four.
And they do whatever, okay, so we don't need, all right. So as far as you're concerned, all the capital's fine?
Yep.
Okay.
That's where I put it.
I guess technically we do have library, it doesn't have any general capital dollars, but they do have some use of fund balance and donations, so if you wanted to take a separate action on the, the special revenue capital, you could.
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the library funding as it's called out here.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the library fund is passed unanimously.
Cover all of the capital.
Do we have to vote on that fire district?
No. Very. Do we vote on the fire district thing? We didn't do that, that's opera, that's, that's general fund.
We, we show the one ninety-four in capital, but that's our contribution for their capital reserve, and we fund that in the general fund.
No, I'm talking about the, 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 the revenue enhancement from the special district, special fire districts. That's part of.
That's twenty-five thousand dollars.
Twenty, yeah. Did we vote on?
Five thousand levy limit adjustment?
We didn't do that one yet, did we?
No.
But that's part of the general fund.
It's part of the general fund, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So how about the other two items, the used levy carry forward, twenty-four hundred?
Well, we can do the, any operating for special revenue and risk management funds, or any of the other operating, any of the other non-general fund operating expenses. Anybody have any? Well, I'll make a motion that we continue as, as outlined, for any of the non-general fund operating expenses.
And what would that be, Bill?
Everything below general fund.
I'll second that.
So that's special revenue fund, risk management, CDA, and all of those.
Again, this is, we're talking about whatever their operating expenses were.
For price fund, operating debt service, TIF operating, CDA, Risk Management Fund, and under special revenue fund, that's things like tourism, library, park funds.
Okay, so is there a second?
Emily.
I did.
Okay, 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 further discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so that's, that's done. So we are just left only with general fund now, so.
For general fund, unless there are other topics, you know, the main issues are the various levy limit adjustments and then the transit issue.
Right. So let's take the, the, the fire, or the, whatever revenue adjustments you had there. The only, the only one that we really have not talked about is the, the charge for the joint fire district, so I'll make a motion that we. That we. That we do this.
Right, we're going to need a resolution, right, but not this meeting, at, at the next meeting.
That you bring us a resolution to do, to accomplish this.
Yeah, a resolution for.
There you go. Second.
Okay, any question or discussion? All those in favor of the motion to have a resolution at the next meeting for the charges of a joint fire district, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so that's in.
Thousand dollars.
Actually, do we need, yeah, do we need to formalize the thousand dollar one? Because I think, I think we've already talked about the levy carry forward.
Yeah.
But have we, have we said formally that we're going to do that, claim that thousand bucks?
It was in the published budget, right?
Yeah, it, these numbers were included in the, in the published budget, so I don't think you need a separate action now.
Okay.
And we have the resolutions at the next meeting spell out which adjustments are being.
Okay. So now basically we're, we're stuck with the Madison Metro. Yes. You knew that's right. Yeah. And what's the sixty-nine?
Are there any large employers in Middleton who would do what Epic is doing? Just asking. Can I answer that? Can I answer that? So the one thing with Epic is that they redesigned the transit flow, really, in the last ten years, because I used to live at Midvale and University, and so they were pulling resources away from other places, which is why they then had to get the extra bus coverage and stuff. And so, could there be other ones? Maybe, but at the same time, they have a reverse commute, so they have people going from Verona into downtown, and then, and it is so huge. They are just taking so many resources, and that's not against them, but I don't think Middleton has a counterpart like that.
Just to put it in perspective, Epic has over ten thousand employees?
Yeah.
And our largest employer is PPD, and they have about fifteen hundred.
Yeah. So that would be like eight times?
And we did a survey of PPD when we were talking about the parking arrangement, and I think they found that up to fifteen percent of their employees would consider using transit if we had a better connected system.
Well, that's good to know.
So that'd be about two hundred.
That'd be great.
People.
Because I, I'm, I drive into Madison every day, and it's bumper to bumper both ways now, and it wasn't like that four years ago.
When you look at these numbers, that is five seventy-six in the average, so if you had two hundred, that, that's actually pretty substantial, isn't it?
We could put, uh, is it PPD? We could put their name on the bus if they.
Yeah, I don't think the company would be willing to sponsor, but that was their employees who would be willing if they had, if we had better direct service by bus.
And you know, less cars on the road means less potholes later, so for anyone interested in mass transit, all for it.
Yeah, go ahead, Susan.
Yeah, uh, do we have any information for the Chamber of Commerce for small businesses in terms of employees that need to get into Middleton? I think it's specifically restaurants, hotels, any of the businesses that are going to be employing people with lower salaries that are truly dependent on bus service to get in?
We had a conversation with Willie Street Co-op, but that is, Mike, have you heard from anyone else too, or?
Well, when Vanette was the director of the chamber, he would occasionally come and comment on this to all of you, because we've heard, he had heard, and the chamber has heard over time, and so have I, from restaurants, retail. has heard over time, and so have I, from restaurants, retailers, services, that just have very difficult time getting employees to and from work, particularly on the weekends, Saturday and Sunday, where we don't have much coverage now. Van mentioned that specifically to the Marriott and other hotels, and now, since Kurt has been the interim chamber director, we've heard from Willie Street Co-op, like the mayor said, we met with them last week to talk about their problems and getting employees to and from work as well.
And I talked to Nick, you know, from Polk Co., and sitting there, he said he might be willing to put some survey together, so I think maybe that would be the right thing to do, where ask the businesses, you know, how could we help you? Yes, Robert?
I'm, I'm not on ped bike. I'm not quite sure who here might be, but I, okay, thank you. I might just point out that we pay approximately $2 million a year on roads, and we don't necessarily go and ask a whole bunch of companies around here saying, hey, you know, kick an extra because employees use roads. And I really don't want to disincentivize people using public transportation in any way, shape, or form by saying, oh, this is something that has an extra cost, and, I mean, to me, it's all in the same bucket of money, and in a lot of ways, and if I were going to pick and choose, I would, I would preferentially try to help improve public transportation. But that's just my opinion, I'm not speaking on behalf of everyone here. Just be aware, if people are willing to give money, great, but I don't know that we should be going out and trying to force people to pay extra money in taxes or whatever for public transportation. It's, it's kind of like infrastructure, like roads are.
Right.
Susan, so I will just say, my intent was to find out when do they need the service and how much?
Perfect.
Not paying, that was just, you know, doing a survey that who needs it, and is it coming from the state capital, or where are their employees coming from, and what is the hole in that service which we could fill? So it was, it was from that perspective. Yes, Susan?
Okay. In terms of the hole, hole in the service, we have, our public transit service is not adequate to serve needs, to encourage people to use it. It needs to be quickly to get from places. I think there's times we need express buses going from Middleton into downtown Madison to the university. You know, when I first got here as a faculty member, I would have ridden the bus because I was used to doing it for many years, and when I discovered it was going to take an hour for me to get to work, it made much more sense to pay $700 and $800 in parking and drive in every day. So we've got to start providing the public transportation, and one of the reasons I feel extremely strongly about that is we are facing a climate change crisis. And the more cars we can get off the roads, the better we will be. So I agree with Robert, this is, public transportation goes along with roads.
Everybody agrees with you. So Nick, you want to say something?
Yeah, just one factor.
Yeah, you can come here, and he's trying to help with this, and I think, you know, if he could come up with some survey or some mechanism of finding out how we can help, that would be good. Yes, go ahead.
Absolutely happy to help with survey to employers to kind of help quantify this. The, one other factor is UW Madison's intern program is, and it's really growing, and being out here especially, I talked about bringing our employees out, but to get interns would really help, that bus service would also really help to get intern help too, so.
I think we can all agree that we would like public transit to be better than it is now. But the discussion that we're having, and I don't think there's a disagreement or anyone in the room, but the discussion we have to have now, today, is, is not what we want.
What we do with what?
But what are we going to do with the shortfall? Because we don't have the money.
Right.
This is an operating expense, and we don't have that money. So the discussion tonight is, really should be, how are we going to fill that $70,000 hole? We all would like it to be something else, but it's not. So what we need to deal with is, we don't have the money for this.
So Bill and Mark, we had that $110,000 which we got from the transportation, increase in transportation. Is there some way to use, I know it's allocated now, could part of that be used here in some form?
Well, we only had really four decision items that we made, right?
Yep, yep.
So we had the sergeants to lieutenants, we had an intern, we had the market study for salaries, and then we had merit increases. Those were our, our only four.
Well, the fourth one was we put some money in the contingency.
I'm sorry?
We put some money in the, well, didn't we put, set aside some money for the contingency or somewhere?
Yeah, so, yeah, the personnel contingency in the recommended budget is 139,416. That includes three items, the merit adjustments at 50,000, the promotion of the four sergeants to lieutenants in the police department at just under 36,000, and then a placeholder of 53,551 for potential adjustments after we do the update of the compensation study for the market. I think what the discussion about the earlier version of the budget, if you look at the scenarios, there was this finance committee scenario that had 77,000 for personnel contingency that was increased to the 139,000. When we were looking at the 77,000, we knew that that would not be enough to fully fund those three items, and there was discussion about implementing them mid-year, or potentially implementing the first two, and then seeing what the results of the market study are, and if we were able to do that this year, or have to do that in part. The thing I would just caution about, we could reduce the personnel contingency, but if we do that and implement things mid-year, we're gonna have that full impact in the following year budget, and we're probably not going to be in any better situation for operating money in 2021. So if we fully fund $140,000 of costs, but only put in half the money, we're gonna have to pay for that other 70-some thousand in 2021.
Except that we are thinking of maybe if we go for referendum.
But you can't count on that, you can't start out your budget by saying, let's just start out $77,000 shy. Because we're counting on.
Okay, so where did the rest of that 110,000 went? Where did you put the other money aside? Did we put that somewhere else?
Well, I don't know what the 110,000 you're referring to is.
Yeah, this is the transport money. You remember we got 110 more than the?
The transportation aid, we had been estimating $100,000 increase, the actual was 166, 896. So we got an additional 67,000, and that all went in the personnel.
Okay, so it was only 67, not 110, so, okay. Okay, so what do we want to do, so?
Just one comment, one thought, if I could. It's tempting to think like Pittsburgh did and say, just tell Madison that we can't fund this in our budget. I suspect that that will be circular in its effect, and Madison will tell us, they'll contact Mark Opitz and say, well, where do you want to cut? So if that's not the case, they would have that problem with us, Sun Prairie, Verona, Pittsburgh, it's about $250,000, so they would open a big hole in their budget if they did not address it that way. Council resolution, you know, stating your.
Displeasure?
Displeasure with the idea, might be something to consider. I'd be happy to draft that for you, but I think it would be a circular situation. It would come back to us, where do you want to cut? So if we're gonna go that route, we may as well talk about where we want to cut, whether it be in the transit service or elsewhere.
So I would ask you to write that letter regardless of what we decide tonight, that their, their timing is inconvenient for us.
Possibly so.
That's being nice.
Trying to be nice.
That is being nice, is what I'm saying.
Where's Mark Sullivan?
I'm trying, it's my, it's the new me. It's the cruelty-free me.
I understand your displeasure with the timing, however, if other people also say no thanks and get their service cut, does that mean they'd actually have buses to fill all these things that they keep saying we may not have enough? And so the reason I'm saying that is that possibly we should express our displeasure, but not too heavily, and focus on the timing.
Which is why I said displeasure as opposed to something else. Anyway, can you put up the slide that has those three, three options, three people, three sets of staffing adjustments?
Personnel contingent?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, but then you set yourself up for, for the following year, right? Which we don't have any.
That was my point.
Yeah.
That's where the compensation plan?
Except that you did identify $30,000, Mark. What was that, that, for the elections, for some of there, so?
That doesn't help us next year. It only is, is of benefit 2021. So talk to me about what happens to us if we fund this through general fund surplus? What, what does it do for us in terms of Moody's or other outside people looking in at us?
Take it out of our.
Right, so at one point, what we did was we, either last year or the two years ago, we said, you know what, we're gonna put a, a contingency from the surplus so that we could max out growth in the levy, right? Remember, we did something like that? We budgeted for a general fund surplus contingency, and we didn't use it, but we used it to, to maximize what we would show in terms of the levy.
Well, I'm not sure if this is what you're referring to, but we did put an emergency contingency in the budget that wasn't tied to revenue, was, the funding source for that was surplus. We did that for purposes of the expenditure restraint program.
Right.
To set our base higher.
Correct.
Yeah, I, a couple thoughts. You know, first of all, if you are looking at funding either any of these personnel items that are ongoing, or the metro cost, rather than take that from surplus, which is really, you know, paying for ongoing items with a single-year surplus, you might want to look at reducing your general contingency. We have 150,000 in there. For a budget our size, I think that's a reasonable number, but if you wanted to, you could reduce that, and then try to build that up in future years. The other thing related to the expenditure restraint program is, right now, we are only $10,000 below that ERP limit. If we pick up that full $70,000 cost from Madison Metro in our budget, we have to reduce somewhere to stay under the ERP limit, and I would recommend taking that from the emergency contingency, lower that from 500,000 to 430, perhaps. That wouldn't affect your levy, because that's, that's just use of fund balance as the revenue source, but on the expenditure side, we need to show that we're still under the ERP limit.
So Bill, there's one other thing which we could look at. So we start, we decrease that, the money which we borrow from TIF by 100,000 every year. So if we just decrease by 50,000, does it, does anything to ERP?
That would affect the revenue side, so it does not affect ERP. We could do that, which would be additional revenue for the general fund. The challenge is that by reducing it by $100,000 each year, when we get to 2025 at the end of the TIF expenditure period, we're still gonna have 575,000 that's being transferred, and that's all gonna go away in 2026. Our plan to deal with that was, if we look at a TIF subtraction in 2020 and get a levy limit adjusted from that, that would help offset this.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if we do that, that would help balance the 2020 budget, but it's gonna be a cost that we need to absorb sometime between now and 2026.
Except that, as you mentioned too, we are taking some of that $100 million out of TIF, so, which will help when the time comes, right? I, I mean, we are taking that $100 million from TIF 30, we are subtracting hundreds, 100 million from the TIF 30 next year.
Right, yeah, so if we do a TIF subtraction next year, we will have a allowable levy limit adjustment based on the amount of the subtracted area, and there's a calculation, you look at the amount subtracted, take 50% of that and divide it by your non-TIF value. So we will get a levy limit adjustment. That probably won't cover the full amount of that cost or recovery offset, but it will help. And I'm just pointing out that if we, instead of reducing it by 100,000, we only reduce it by 50,000, that'll help our 2020 budget, but we still will have to come up with 50,000 at some point.
Well, but that would be a good solution right now, so.
We don't want to kick that candy off the road. We, right.
In fact, one of Mark's questions, though, if we reduce our contingency fund by 70,000, does that affect us with the Moody ratings?
500. That's, there's no revenue associated with that, that's just use of fund balance.
Fund balance. That wouldn't help either. Two problems.
It would help with expenditure restraint, but it won't help provide the fund.
Yeah, if you have a, excuse me?
So what I hear is we have two problems here, not just one. We have, we have a problem with finding 70 grand, and then we have a problem in hiding 60 of it.
Yeah, there's, there's a revenue side and an expenditure side. The revenue side is we need to find $70,000 of revenue to pay for this. On the expenditure side, we need to fit it within our expenditure restraint budget, and the probably easiest place to do that is adjust our emergency contingency. And the emergency contingency, just to give a little background to everyone, it's something that the year that the city did not qualify for the expenditure restraint program, we wanted our base to be high so that we could try to qualify in future years, so we included this. It doesn't have a revenue source, so if we need to use it, the funding comes from our fund balance, and as it turns out, we very shortly had to use it for the flooding, and that came from fund balance. So I mean, it is a legitimate thing why it's budgeted there.
The library roof too.
Yeah, 100,000 for the library roof.
No, that was.
Yeah, that actually came from general.
That was general fund contingency.
We have, gets complicated, because we have all these different pots.
This was a, think of it this way, the operating has its own contingency fund, which next year is budgeted at 150. The operating budget, or the general fund surplus, has a contingency as well that we've used for the expenditure restraint program. They're completely different. One is, essentially, it's a financial mechanism to get us, how much in ERP dollars this year?
75,000.
175,000 bucks, right? There's, there's no impact to operating funds. All it is, is just a device to get us under this ERP.
Which is important, 175,000.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, we have two issues here. Right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I kind of think of emergency contingency as it's, you're, you're kind of almost pre-authorizing that in an emergency, you have expenditure authority if you want to use it. You can reduce that amount, hopefully we won't have a major emergency. If we do, you probably have to look at a budget amendment, and if it's a declared emergency, there are provisions in the expenditure restraint law that allow you to exceed your limits. So I think the easier of the two solutions is the expenditure side, because we So I think the easier of the two solutions is the expenditure side, because we could deal with that with that contingency amount. The, I think, more challenging piece of the discussion is where do we come up with the revenue? But you are right, there are two sides that we need to adjust in our budget to deal with this.
So does that seem to be the best solution, then?
My thought for the expenditure side is to stay within the ERP limit. Whatever we add in funding for transit, we have a reduction in that emergency contingency, and that'll let us continue to qualify for expenditure restraint. And I think the question is still on the table of, how are we funding that? If we're funding that by reducing expenditures in other areas, then the expenditure question goes away. If we're trying to find new revenue, then, yeah, I think the only real revenue option that we're looking at is the potential of looking at a wheel tax, or there was the suggestion to look at the cost recovery from the TIF district as a revenue source.
Yeah, I would look at the cost recovery first before I go to the wheel tax, so.
So let's take the easy one first. I think that, so let me just, we'll play the game here. How many people want to fully fund the Madison Metro stuff?
Talking to the 70,000?
Yes.
Yes.
Right? Everybody wants to do that. How many people want to make these, make changes to the personnel items that we've identified? I'm not trying to be judgmental at all, I just want to get, get a sense of, of where people's heads are, right? How many people are open to making changes to those three items?
Three, three items, so.
Can you go back to the?
Sure.
Right, so how many people are, I don't, I'm not trying to pin you down on this, but how many people are open to making changes to these items to get this bus thing to work? Okay. So we're back to, we need 68 grand of cost reductions or revenue additions to make this work, right? Everybody agree on that?
Yes.
Okay.
Mark, how about, okay, you look at this compensation for planned market adjustments. We had different amount to start with, and then we raised it. At least, we don't have to get all 70,000 from one lot. We could possibly get it from more than one places. So I don't know.
So part of the problem with that thinking, Kadeep, is that I fully expect that probably 60, 70% of that dollar amount is going to get chewed up when the, the salary recommendation comes back for the police chief. Just from what we know, from recruiting. So now there's what? There's at least three police chief openings in, in the area, rate Madison, here, and I thought I read one somewhere.
Comprer, Wanaki.
They all have police chief openings?
Wow.
Oh, my gosh.
Right, so the likelihood of us not fully funding that, that salary amount is increasingly unlikely.
So, Bill, how much do we have set aside for the police chief, which we already have in the budget, and won't have any problem?
Yeah, 117, 117 to 118 was projected in the budget for next year. Those projections were made based off of existing staff, so that's what we have set.
And then, we are not hiring, I mean, don't know when the police chief would be hired, at least.
The goal set by the Police Commission was to have the candidate named by January 31st, 2020.
Okay.
But that, depending on the candidate, we don't know exactly when they would start.
Okay, so you're thinking that we will be paying more than 117, then?
Would be.
I think it'll entirely depend on the candidate and the, you know, scenario that's, that's brought forward.
So. The difference, though, between our budget and, our budget, did that, does that count the longevity pay that Chuck, is that now, or?
Those are just the salaries.
Just the salary. So longevity is going to be, with that, would get us up to about 125. And a new chief, right, and so a new chief would not have the longevity pay, so we've got about 124, we're advertising up to 135. So I was going to suggest that if you kept 13, 551, in the compensation plan market adjustments, and made the policy decision to make all of the other adjustments on January 1st, 2021, that you could get 40,000 from that without really significantly affecting our ability to hire a chief at that highest level.
We'll give you 50% of reclass.
Thank you.
Okay, so how much, Bill, so, we get about 40,000?
On a calendar year basis, because then another, you have a whole.
So that gives us about 40,000, is that what we have?
Yeah, I'd say if you, if you kept 13, 551.
Okay.
That would put us, well, would I come up, 124? Yeah, so that would give us the latitude to hire up to the top that we advertise for the police chief. If you factor in relocation costs, that's always a potential, so that, you'd still have a little bit extra for that, too.
Okay, so, so that's.
So before you, before you agree for us, why don't we talk about this? Right, so Susan has a question.
Please. That's assuming that we, the only position we have to fill this next year is the police chief. With what you're suggesting, what happens if some other senior administrative person gets a better offer somewhere? We have to meet that.
Well, that's true, that could happen.
And that's something we need to keep in mind.
Yes.
Part, part of that is, is that if there is an increase, there's usually a six to 10-week delay when you're recruiting, so then you, you don't have pay in that time period, and for that small time, you would then be able to push that off to pay for that difference for the remaining of the year.
Except that you have accrued vacation and other termination expenses that you are paying for, so that the, the window that you think you have has just closed.
And you want to potentially keep the person. And that's a standard way in a lot of professions of.
I don't know, if you're, I'm, I'm not debating you personally, but what I'm, I'm thinking is, is if we're always debating ourselves on every possible maybe, we're not going to get anywhere in life. So we, we have to, I hear you, and, okay, vacation, totally forgot about, because I got none, because after two babies, no vacation left. But can we do something with this?
No babies, no vacation. Yeah, right? Okay, sorry.
Well, remember, we have 150,000 in contingency, and that's what contingency is for.
Yeah.
Cover stuff that you don't anticipate.
Emergency buses.
And Melissa, on top of that, there are, we have that, when some positions are not filled, we have some money from that as well, right?
The funding that I think you're referring to is there's some, there were some vacancies in 2019.
Yeah.
And we've used that in a couple of sources. We've used that to work with the third-party executive recruitment on the police chief recruitment. That was about a $20,000 contract. There will be a proposal before council next week that'll go to Personnel, Finance, and Council for the classification and compensation updates. That will also be recommending to use that, those savings. We typically try to reserve some of those savings when possible to compensate for any open enrollment changes, when somebody has a life event, maybe changing from like a single health insurance plan to a family health insurance plan. It's good to keep a little bit of that reserved for those changes as well. Those are also one-time surpluses.
Okay.
So if we have a surplus in 2019, going forward into 2020, there's nothing that guarantees that that would be there. So we typically are recommending use one-time surpluses to fund one-time expenses.
Okay, thank you.
So let's talk about the general fund operating contingency, 150 grand. We've used it sparingly in previous year. This year, we've used, 19, we've used it for some things. If we tap into this, if we take that number down, we are really thin in terms of what we have for emergency use, which basically means that everyone here is agreeing that there are no emergencies next year. That's in all practicality, that's what we're saying, is that we will not consider requests for contingency funding next year, just so everybody's aware of that. Is everybody okay with that?
I don't see anybody excited about that, so.
What was our contingency fund this year, and how much did we spend? And we spent, did we, did we spend it all on flood-related?
This is the, the tracker for 2019. Our starting number was just under 149,000. We spent 30,000 on aquatic center repairs, 26,000 for dangerous tree removals, and then 40,000 for electronic pole books. And I think part of the thought process there was, we were late in the year, knew we had funding, and that could offset a 2020 capital item.
So really, the only emergency here was the tree removals.
Well, and the repair to keep the.
It's at the aquatic center accounts, too.
I don't know, that, that may have been.
You don't have a kid taking swimming lessons.
I have, but not recently. So basically, 50 grand. So what we're saying is that about, out of the original allocation, we spent about 50 grand in emergency funding. Really, truly emergency, right? The pole books was a convenience factor, right? So.
Is there any negotiating with Madison? Do we say, like, we can come up with 40, and, or will they just pull buses?
Do you want the answer? Do you want me to let everybody off the hook? Do you want?
So, Mark, how about getting, taking it from two sources, contingency and that the
other item?
So, Bill, talk to me about the golf fund. Right now, the 400 is going to debt relief, or it's essentially, it's a balance sheet transfer.
Yeah, it.
So there's no revenue, there's no expense impact.
Right, it just, it changes what's currently non-spendable fund balance to available fund balance, and then the council can decide within the general fund how you want to designate that. If you want to leave that in unassigned, or if you want to designate it for things like capital reserves or sick payout accruals.
Well, we had already decided that we were going to be using that for the, the third-party funding.
And that, yeah, that's what we've talked about, is, is using that to maintain our balance for the sick accrual and payout to the third party when employees leave.
Except that, do we need 400,000? Could we take some out, out of there this year?
No. The problem is, is that, talking about balance sheet, and we need operating income.
It, it, it's not an ongoing revenue source. It's, you know, as we get these payments, bringing up fund balance in the general fund, if we're funding ongoing items out of that, eventually, you're going to draw down your fund balance and not have that in the future. You know, again, it, it would help balance the budget in the short run, but it's not a long-term solution. Yeah, I, I think potentially, just from what I've heard, if we did reduce the personnel contingency by the 40,000 to implement market adjustments on 1 of 21, and it'll take some time to do the study and get the results and review that anyway.
At 30.
Potentially provide 40,000, and if you were to reduce the general contingency from 150 to 120, yeah, that, at least based on prior history, I understand that the point of we have to be very careful of how we use it, but at least based on history, we haven't had true emergencies before. That's one option to look at those two sources.
So I would recommend you go the other way. I'd take 50 out of contingency, and then the, the other 29 from the market adjustments, right?
Is that your motion, then?
No, I'm just throwing it out there for discussion, only because, you know, again, I think we run into optic problems. If, if we have a market study that says to the normal employee that says you're, the market salary recommendation for your position is, is 2,000 or 3,000 bucks more per year, and we don't, we're not going to make an adjustment per year, I think that just makes us look bad. I don't know that we have a year to do this. I don't, I don't know that we have till June 1st to do this. Unless you're talking about postponing this, the study, or, or manipulating the study so that we don't get the results back till mid-year, I think as soon as we have that, that study back, there's, there has to be an expectation that we make those changes as reasonably as possible. And I don't think next year, or 2021, is reasonable.
Melissa and I have talked with the consultant that we're going to recommend the study next Tuesday, and she gave us a timeline of essentially four to six months. So we probably have results of the study back by May, early June, perhaps. So it's, you know, I don't think our employees would expect that you make that, those adjustments immediately. They understand we have a calendar year budget. Where it really makes a big difference is in that police chief, because we're hiring right now, if, to whoever said, well, Susan said, what if some other position opens up and you need to pay more for it? Well, that might be eligible for a contingency allocation, but I, I just don't think six months will be a big deal.
But Mark does have a point.
On the market, on the market survey.
On the market survey, yeah.
I don't mean that.
But also, if we need to, could we, at that time, use some of the contingency fund? Bill?
If the council agrees to it.
Yeah, so I mean, if there's a need, then that's what we have to do, so.
You could, you could use the.
Yeah.
How big is that contingency fund, though?
It's 150.
150.
So I'm just suggesting 40,000 there, and then we try to figure out the other 30,000 or whatever addition that you want for transit.
No, and that's why I suggested we go the other way, take 50 out of it. 50 out of contingency, so you have a $20,000 funding hole, right?
Take the general contingency from 150 to 100.
Right.
And then you would take 20, or, you know, so you're taking.
19, 584 from the general contingent, or from the personnel for the market study.
Let's second that. Yep.
He didn't make a motion yet, but.
It sounded like a motion.
Is that a motion?
But just, that's, that's, that's my motion. But I just want to make sure everybody understands that when we do this, there are no emergencies next year.
Well, we'll, we'll just legislate that.
Well, that's why I was saying.
Put that in the motion.
Well, Mark, do you want to split half and half?
No, I think that's the, the best way to do it.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Any other things to discuss?
Just if there are any other potential amendments to the general fund.
Okay, if there's a nothing, need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, so we are adjourned.